I want to call to order this meeting of the Hutchinson City Council, August 7, 2018. Linda Colerole, please.
Dave Line.
Here.
Hiros Day Carvalho.
Here.
Solner.
Here.
Inskeep.
Here.
Deckent.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item.
We have a prayer.
Daryl, thank you. Please come forward. Now, didn't mean to slow you down, just keep on coming.
I thought she was gonna show me where the exit was.
Oh, there it is.
No need for that.
That's great. Dear heavenly most gracious Father, again we come before you for the city council, Father, and we just thank you that as a time such as this, that we have all the liberty and the freedom that we can voice our opinion. And Father, we just thank you for people that have come, that come to council to voice their opinion, whether it's right or wrong. But Father, we just thank you for that liberty and freedom. Thank you, Father, for the liberty and the freedom that we have to vote in America today. And Father, I thank you for that. And Father, we just thank you for everything you're doing within the city. And Father, we just pray for wisdom. And Father, as the financial situations are, that Father God, we just thank you, you give them wisdom. So how they vote and what they do, Father, is for the best. Thank you for all these things, Father. And oh, by the way, Father, I just thank you as the day of election is coming, it's here, it's going. And I just thank you, Father God, for all those stupid phone calls that come in that are political, that are about to end today for season, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
We can only hope.
Thank you, Daryl. But Daryl, you need to pray for some patience, because they're gonna start up again here before long.
General.
All right.
I'm hoping.
Next item, please.
Item four A, Entrepreneurship Task Force Presentation.
Excuse me, Linda, do we, I should have probably, do we do the proclamation?
Oh, we're gonna do proclamation before that, okay.
Yeah. We have an off agenda, or an added addition to the agenda, we have a proclamation. Whereas wind energy is now one of the most affordable options for generating electricity in America, and whereas the wind industry has created 105,500 U.S. jobs, and wind turbine technician is the second fastest growing job in America, and whereas Kansas is home to 2,795 wind projects and four active manufacturing facilities, including Siemens-Gomezo Renewable Energy, that directly employs more than 250 men and women in Hutchinson, and whereas Kansas provided 36% of all in-state electricity production in 2017, ranking second in the nation as a share of total electricity, and fifth for installed wind capacity, and whereas America generates enough electricity from wind to power 25 million average homes, and whereas energy independence and energy security are in every American's best interests. Now, therefore, I, Stephen A. Deckent, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of August 5 to 11, 2018, as American Wind Week, in the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, in honor of the men and women working toward creating clean, green energy for generations to come. I encourage the residents of Hutchinson to learn about and celebrate wind energy. Who's receiving?
All of them.
On behalf of Siemens-Gomezo Renewable Energy, we are so proud to be in the City of Hutchinson, employing, like you said, more than 250 of your friends and family right here in Hutchinson, Kansas. And thank you to the council for this proclamation in recognizing American Wind Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, someone to the station.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna turn this off.
You're good, Paula?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, folks.
You can excuse us, but we need to get back to factory.
There you go.
Thank you.
Wind waits for no one.
Thank you, folks.
The wind waits.
The wind waits for no one.
That's right. Okay. Next item, please.
Now we'll have the Entrepreneurship Task Force Presentation.
Right. The anticipation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you. As I guess my job today would be to tell you how we got on this journey. I guess I should talk a little closer to the mic. But anyway, basically, what we started, we started with a cup of coffee. And a group of us met, and we looked at Hutchinson, and one of the things that we saw was that there was a lot of good things happening in Hutchinson and Reno County. Unfortunately, it was clouded by a lot of the other news that was out there. And as we talked to the individual members in the county, one of the things that they had a real negative impression of Reno County. And we actually, on our committee, which the committee was people that worked hard to bring businesses into the county and the city, we thought there was a lot of good things happening, and we wanted to get the voice out. So basically, we started with that group of people. And then on, in December, we took a group down to Tulsa. We wanted to see what communities were doing right in the area. And so we visited 36 degrees north in Kitchen 66, which is an incubator kitchen. And there's 11 of us that went down to Tulsa, and we actually toured the facilities, and we got some advice from them. One of the things that they said we needed to do was really quantify why we weren't getting more businesses and business startups entrepreneurs into the community. So in turn, that really started the entrepreneurial task force, which is made up of 19 different organizations. And so with that, Abby in the chamber put together a survey, and we also had a town hall meeting that culminated from that. So Abby's gonna talk to you a little bit about some of the data that we collected, not only from the survey, but also the town hall meeting.
Again, I'm Abby Stock, Brand Economic Development Manager for Greater Hutch, the Economic Development Division of the Chamber. Thank you for allowing us to come and talk about our progress. We started in December of 2017, so it's been eight months, and I wanted to show the progress, what we've made on not only the 19 organizations we have, which you can see are cross-section of financial institutions, municipalities, entrepreneurs themselves, people that deal with entrepreneurs or different economic development projects, and a lot of other community partners that have a stake in growing entrepreneurism in Reno County. Like I said, we started out in December, 19 organizations. Dave talked about the initial trip to Tulsa. So this really started out small with a few organizations, and it's really snowballed because of the people that care in Reno County about seeing entrepreneurism grow. And we decided as a group, after they went to the trip to Tulsa, that we needed to have a Reno County entrepreneurial ecosystem gap analysis. So we do have current assets in Reno County, but how do we better serve whatever startups or one to two years established, mature businesses, they all have different needs. And so what are those gaps, and how can we better serve the people of Reno County? So as a part of that, after we did the gap analysis, we said we need to gather more information from the people that are entrepreneurs in Reno County. So we wanted to do those two ways. One way was the entrepreneurship survey. So I'll talk about the survey results, and we had about 58 people that took that survey. Forty-eight of those people were small business owners or budding entrepreneurs that had a concept or idea. And then we had the entrepreneurship town hall after that. So we used the data that we got from the survey, and then dove deeper into how we can better affect change in Reno County, and what those entrepreneurs need from us, the stakeholders, to be more effective. So as I mentioned, 57 responses, 48 of those being small business owners in Reno County. You can see from the pie chart that we have a lot of different stages of business. And that was really important to us, to understand who are we talking to, and their responses, what do they need from our ecosystem in Reno County. So I wanted to specifically point out the different sectors that we have, because that'll be important when I'm diving into what those people said are their concerns, their needs in Reno County for their success. Because we have startup, idea, proof of concept, one to two years established, three to five years, and then mature after that. So anything past five years is considered mature for the purpose of this survey alone. And we had a pretty good cross-sector of business industries, with heavy being in the service, but service is very broad in itself. So we thought we had a pretty good representation of a lot of different industries in Reno County. I just wanted to give you a feel of if this were one large employer, what are they saying, and how, what their effect is, and how they kind of fit into Reno County's current ecosystem. Of, if you were to take the full-time equivalent, so that's taking part times, putting them into full time, as well as all of the cumulative employees, that's 193. So that would be a fairly large employer in Reno County at this time. And 36 of those 48 companies reported the, that they were seeing employment trends and sales trends. So not everyone, but a large majority of those people participated in that question. So really, a pretty positive outlook, which I wanted to share with this group, because sometimes you only hear about the, the not-so-good, or maybe the people that are the larger employers, you may only hear about them. But cumulatively, this group is a large employer. I mean, it's harder to think about those people that are employing one to five people. But if those people are saying that they're going to either stay the same or increase in the next two years in employment, or that their, their sales trends are looking positive in the next two years, that's a positive overall. So I wanted to let you know, from this group specifically that we looked at, they are looking to grow, and they have the optimism for the next two years. So we looked a lot at what assistance people have gotten, what they're currently needing, and then what they're looking for in the future, so that we could assess where we've been and where we need to go. So one-third of those participants that own a business had sought assistance. You can see that financial and business planning were the most, with marketing and market research behind that. Specifically, the people that have received, so of those one-third of the people, this is where they've received those specific assistance. And I dove into what kind of assistance they were wanting to receive, and then who they were getting it from, as well as what stage of business and age demographic that they have had. So primarily, when they were seeking financial assistance, they were looking at first local banks, then the Quest Center, then SKED, which SKED is the South Central Kansas Economic Development District, which does a lot of small business loans and helps to do financial help with the assistance of local companies, local businesses. And then by and large, when people are looking at business planning, they were looking at the Quest Center. When you look at stage of business, across all sectors, people were primarily looking for assistance at local banks. That was by and large, and really kind of surprised me, that people are looking first to local banks for assistance, even if they might not have that collateral. And if you look at the three to five years established, the Quest Center was most utilized, so in that subcategory of that stage of business. When you look at age demographics, so the same people looking at the local banks in the stage of business, also in the 25 to 35-year-old range, those are the people that are looking at local banks as well, but they are looking less than any other demographic. So they're only looking at local banks and none else on the 25 through 35-year-olds. And then the 55-plus-year-olds, 40% of those are reaching out to the Quest Center, and that was pretty prevalent when you're looking at the data. So we looked at what they've done in the past, now we wanted to look at their current needs. By and large, all stages, they needed marketing and mentoring. And that, that came in a lot of different facets, and that's very broad. So we'll dive deeper into that using the town hall that we did, and to what do they mean by marketing and mentorship. Startups to five-year, they were looking at venture capital and financing, which makes sense, because they're starting up, they need more finances. And then mature, they're looking at succession planning, which is very important to Reno County residents, and how that we can make that connection with the people that want to own a business, and people that want to have a retirement plan, so that they can pass along that business successfully, and how do we do that to help them. So two things I wanted to illustrate to you for this. So the future needs is by and large, across all sectors, the marketing. You can see that that was 54% of people said that they're gonna need marketing assistance, which isn't surprising when you think of how marketing has changed, and you have a lot of social media, digital, and I mean, there, it's kind of ever-changing, and so you kind of need constant training on that. And that was across all sectors. And then you get into more of the weeds of access to capital or education and training, which also goes along with a lot of these other sectors as well. Legal assistance, and you can go down the line there. But by and large, it was marketing assistance that people were looking for. Startups to five-years established was looking for access to capital and financial management, assistance to finding suitable buildings, and education and training. Then you have the mature companies primarily shifting towards their needing employee recruitment, building improvements, and building transition assistance, which, when you think about it, all makes sense. So these are the concerns overall on the right side, as well as diving into each stage of business. So overall, people are again concerned about the marketing and attracting and retaining new customers, taxes, governmental regulatory issues, generating cash flow. But when you go into the stage of businesses, startups are primarily concerned with taxes, insufficient space at current location, which means they're growing, which is consistent with what they were saying, that they are anticipating growth in the next two years, and the weak local and national economy. They would be a lot more susceptible to those changes than maybe a more established company. The three to five years established are looking at marketing and attracting new customers and cash flow. And then mature are primarily concerned with governmental regulatory issues, marketing and attracting new customers.
And Abby, on, on each of those, say, let's, let's pick out the government regulatory issues. Was that broken down by local, state, federal? I mean, do we know where that burden is?
It's not. But that's, that's what we were hoping would come out further in the town hall discussion.
Oh, okay.
I think some of it, like when you look at taxes, those are primarily local taxes that they were concerned about. And then when you also go back to what assistance people are needing, I think they also, like mature companies, are looking at building improvements. So that would fall into the local regulatory issues too, or governmental regulatory. But we didn't dive super deep into what specifically they were talking about with government regulatory issues.
We can expect maybe a report on that in the future?
Yeah. And it came out a little bit in the town hall, but I think it's one of those things that have been talked about so much, too, that people didn't talk about it as much in the town hall.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Like, we wanted to move past, like, okay, this is an issue, now we can move to what's being unsaid in the past.
I see. Yes, that makes perfect sense.
But, yeah, please.
One of the things that we noticed at the Quest Center, that seemed like a lot of people will come to us after a project's already started, and they don't realize that they have to go through the different steps, and so we get them afterwards. So I think if they would involve more people, and we'll talk about communication in a minute, but I think if we involve more people at the start, that a lot of these people will go into it eyes-open versus getting the project halfway done, and then finding they're not apt to code, or something else is involved in it.
So there's a huge education piece on the front side. Okay, thank you.
And I think a lot of the questions, if I remember correctly, were geared to get us towards which questions to even ask, and things like that. We didn't want to be prescript, I say "we" because I participated in a lot of the meetings, but prescriptive, without knowing exactly what they wanted. So many times, we overreach and say, well, this is what you need. You need access to money, or you need access to marketing. We wanted to find out, is that truly what they need? And those two appears to be accurate, and so on. So I think there will be a drilling down eventually, if I'm not wrong.
So this was with the survey specifically, and I, we asked the same thing of the town hall participants. So there'd be a little bit of redundancy on, we asked what are the things going well in our current ecosystem, what are the things that aren't going so well, and what improvements could help your business grow in Reno County. And so you can see the strengths there. We have a lot of options, we have assistance, we have available buildings, which we do. That's a, see, that can be a strength, and people willing to help in the community. Weakness, talked about local regulations, lack of information of available resources. That came up, a lot of people just not knowing where to turn. And Dave talked a little bit about that with communication. So that's communicating between the providers and amongst the, who has those resources and who can help those entrepreneurs. And succession planning, and then the improvements, third-party to facilitate assistance, again, kind of that communication piece, reduce local regulations, provide development guide, and succession planning. So this was the town hall that I've been talking about. It was held on June 18, and we heard from Daniel Friesen, Jenny Bryan, and Kevin Evenson, which most of you know are very accomplished entrepreneurs in our community, and had a great story to tell. Because what we wanted to do with this town hall was not only get information from either these budding entrepreneurs or seasoned entrepreneurs, but wanted to get people excited about what we have available, as well as what their potential could be in Reno County. And so we had approximately 70 people in attendance. About 15 of those were volunteers, a part of our task force, that were helping facilitate these small-group discussions. We asked, again, that same question that I just talked about from the survey, of what's working well, what needs improvement, and how could our system better serve you to be successful in Reno County. And then session two, we looked at a deeper dive into finance, marketing, and mentorship, which came up multiple times in the survey, as you've probably already seen from the data I showed you from the survey. So we wanted to say, okay, if those three things are hot-button issues, how can we dive deeper and be more effective to serve you? So strengths, weaknesses, improvements. Again, the strengths are the people and the support, and that people really want to see local people grow in this community. There's many successful businesses to be mentors, or guides, or provide advice. And SCORE and Quest Center specifically, the e-communities revolving loan fund, is definitely beneficial to companies. Weaknesses, lack of knowledge of available resources, again, need for a sounding board, so mentorship, and effectively communicating to the new age of entrepreneurs, making sure that we're communicating with them how they need to be communicated with. And improvements, again, is communication. So we're seeing, I hope you're seeing some trends as we saw. So then we dove into those three main hot-button topics for them, and, and said specifically, what do you need for these three things? And marketing, they need, they need a strategy. So not only does it need to be helped in the business plan as a part of the business plan, and show the return on investment that marketing provides, but having that in your business plan, additional understanding and training for those tools of the new age of marketing. But people by and large said that they need assistance, and they need to know how to make it as a part. It's not, it has to be a part of your business, and not just a side thought if you have any extra money or time. So the finance, lack of available resources, and there was a lack of available, availability of funds for initial business loans and startup financing. So tying this all together for you, when you have the startups and the 25 to 35-year-olds primarily going to the local businesses, but yet they don't have the initial business loan or startup financing, it may stop right there. And they don't know where to turn to, because we haven't communicated to them where they can turn past going to the local banks. So we're seeing that disconnect of if they're looking there, they may stop right there, and then our pipeline dries up of those people that are budding entrepreneurs that could definitely own a business and be successful in Reno County. And then mentorship, lack of centralized place for mentorship connections. And participants noted that a lot of mentorship programs are very formal, like I'm assigned with someone else, and they are my mentor, and I am their mentee, and then off you go into the sunset. But sometimes that isn't how it goes. And so how do we have more of those informal connections, or maybe their, their messaging boards online, or just how do they have those informal ways to connect that may turn into a mentor-mentee connection? And then why we did all this, for our next steps. So I wanted to talk, I wanted to have Dave talk about what our group, so as a task force, after we got all of this, we looked at the data, and we decided on these six main subcommittees for further action on how we can be more beneficial to entrepreneurs and keep moving forward.
Thank you. As we, as we looked at it, you know, probably our first impression was that we needed some additional financing for these entrepreneurs. And really, financing is available. So what we have found is that a lot of groups are doing a lot of good work, but nobody really knows what they're doing. So what we're trying to do with this committee, our task force, is to start combining some of our efforts. So we are working together as a group. Those 19 companies that it represents are working together to get a common thread. We want to continue on communication, and we think that's important. So we're working with some people on developing some type of communication piece, and bringing it to the groups that are involved, so that if you have a question on zoning, then this is who you go to. If you have a question on financing, this is who you go to. And we will work with some of the financial institutions around. I think that's important, as well as some of the other sources that we have. The other thing we talked a little bit about, and I think it goes back to the communication, is the centralized location on where people go for help. And I think that's gonna be pretty tough to do, but we're gonna work towards that direction. That's something that we need to continue to, to work towards. And again, that's more of the communication piece. If everybody knew what everybody was doing, then we would have a better understanding on who to send people to if they have a specific question. Again, we're working on financing for entrepreneurs, we're working on getting more mentorship, and again, I think it's gonna be communication. Our task force is meeting again on the 16th. And I think, as Abby stated, these are concerned citizens. You know, Reno County and Hutchinson, Kansas, all of us were built on the pioneer spirit, and we want to bring that back to us. We want to take control of our destiny. So that's, again, this task force has ongoing, and it's probably more in the subcommittee area now, and bringing it to the entire committee. But the work has to be done at the six individual units that we've identified that came up from the survey and the town hall meeting. So with that, I'm gonna open it up to questions, I guess.
Dave, I'm gonna ask you a question. As I recall, one of the most initial intimidating items that a want-to-be entrepreneur is faced with is that when they would, when you would consult with them, or Abby would, that the question would be initially, well, do you have a business plan? And in some cases, people say, no, but I've got a great idea. And I know it'll work, and I'm gonna make millions of dollars, and that, that kind of an oversimplification. But take a few minutes with us this morning, and give us some insights in terms of what typically goes into the business plan itself, and how is that generally adhered to once it's completed, and you counsel with these entrepreneurs?
You know, the, the perception of a business plan is it's to go approach a bank, and it's gonna help me get financing. And that's not necessarily true. It should be more of a river, if you will, that will change direction as it matures, and as it goes, it's continuing to change in direction. So what we want to do, as we start to look at a business plan, that good idea they have, we want them to talk a little bit about it. that good idea they have, we want them to talk a little bit about it. That's the first part of it. Then we'll, we'll start looking at, is there an actual market for it? They'll do some market research. We, we work with individuals to put it all together, but they have to do the hard work. They have to do the legwork. They have to decide, you know, is there a market? Can I do research on it? Where do I go? We have some resources that they can go to, to start that resource. Then finally, we want to know if it's feasible. We want to look at the projections. And, you know, if you have a great idea, which a lot of entrepreneurs do, oftentimes they have a great idea, but they're not very good business people. And so what we want to do is to start looking at some of the financial projections, some of the costs to bring it to market. We work with, you know, do they need to go through the steps as far as getting a trademark or a patent for that individual idea? Or is it just a really good idea solving a problem for the community? And that's what we want to encourage them to do, to solve problems. As I look at the businesses that come through the Quest Center, we probably get two or three really good original ideas that we will pursue on. But most of them are solving a problem in our community, or the people have. And that's what they want to do, is come to a solution for that problem. And then we'll start to put down the finances, projections, and actually look if it is feasible. And that's basically what I look at in a business plan. I got a very simple one that I use, and it's, it's really only five steps, but the financials are probably the biggest challenge that a lot of people get discouraged at. Thank you.
I might add a comment. Having been to the meetings, I can't overemphasize the, the great members that are involved in the task force. And everybody is sharp, and everybody's got great ideas, and the passion's definitely there. But also, there's, there's some real power there. There's decision makers at, at various levels of the city, the county, state reps are at the table. So I mean, things can happen. Things can be done. Ordinances can be made, laws can be changed. The right people are at the table. That's the thing that really, really encourages me about this particular group, and what they're working towards.
Well, thank you guys again for your time and attention. And I provided you a copy of the final report. And I just ask that in the future, when these subcommittees are trying to move into more actions to make Reno County even better place to do business, that you all will be a partner with us in order to help facilitate growth in entrepreneurship.
Abby, I did have one more question, speaking to that. So if there are specific action items that come out, just on the municipal level, will receive that communication, basically suggestions or recommendations of ordinance changes, or, okay?
Yes, I would anticipate.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item?
Item 4B, oral communications from the audience.
This is the time where there is opportunity for those of you in the audience to address the council, if you wish, on matters that have to do with the city, but are not on the agenda at this point in time. We would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council? Jesse?
I liked that last presentation. The Quest Center is at Ninth and Main, so I expect an onslaught of entrepreneurs to hit that building up. Get your ideals out there. I just wanted to come in and say that there's another...
Jesse, excuse me, I didn't ask, would you give us your name and address?
Sorry, Jesse Juma, at Southwest Bricktown. Because that's what I'm here for today. The other national event happening today, besides the primary, is the National Night Out. And so I want to remind everybody to get out tonight to visit your neighborhoods that are having the event. And I think Farmington Park is also involved, and College Grove, but also ours is Southwest Bricktown. Ours in particular, I just wanted to come and say thank you, because the city has been participating in the redevelopment of that park. So we actually have new park equipment. It's, the guys are down there finishing up right now, touching up a shelter that's being built, and they're putting the roof on right now as we speak. But playground equipment has been added. There's future development there with another shelter with restrooms. We have electricity out there to, to utilize. And we had a community build last Saturday, which, again, city employees came down and helped us. So I wanted to, I want to thank Justin Combs and Steve Allen, the superintendent from the Parks Department. It's interesting, working with those guys out there, actually seeing how enthusiastic they are to help the community, you know, you know, city employees out there, but how enthusiastic they are to bringing this, you know, stuff like this to the community, to help us build that equipment and stuff. So it's really good to see the pride that they take in their jobs, which is helping, you know, even though that's their job, but they really take pride in it. So it's really cool. But that's it. Tonight, real quick, ours is from 6:00 to 9:00 tonight. And Southwest Bricktown Park, it's being renamed. So if you're not familiar, it's across the street from the Police Department, on Jefferson Street, between First and Sherman, but right across from the Police Department. And we're going to have a hot dog cookout. The police, well, National Night Out is a community policing, neighborhood community, you know, thing. But we will have all the emergency response teams out there. So the sheriffs and the fire department and police will be out there with their vehicles. And I want to thank also Harlan Credit Union, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Hutchinson Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, you know, for all being a part of this development. There's going to be music, and a bouncy house, and all that good stuff. So anyway, just come out and join us tonight. After you go vote also, too. So thanks.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
Anyone else? Morning, Andy.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Andy Anderson, 424 Cary Street. I've just, a quick question, when we're having, and first of all, I appreciate the road construction. This went on 11th and Fourth, they're wonderful. When the road construction happens, how are we notifying the public of what roads will be closed and when?
I know I've seen Facebook notices.
We put out press releases every, pretty, pretty frequently to the local media, Facebook...
Radio, I've heard on radio.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because when this, when the construction started, everybody's like, surprised, you know, they didn't know what was going on. I just wonder if there was a better way to make this more accessible to the people? You know, they're going to, they're all, I don't get the paper. I don't have Facebook. I mean, I know we can't totally hand-feed it to them, but I didn't know if there was a...
If we did an individual mailing, it'd be awfully expensive, and that'd be tax dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do really a pretty good job, and the media helps us with that. But, you know, road construction, you know, we put in news that we're going to start today, and then it rains. And so, so they're not going to start for two days. And so it's just difficult. But, you know, when we're closing access to driveways, things like that, there's personal contact with those homeowners and businesses. So...
Immediately impacted.
Yeah. But if you live on the other side of town, you know, you're, you're going to read what you read in the newspaper. But if it's impacting your business or your home for driveway or whatever, those people receive individual notices, so.
That was my only concern. I just wondered if there was an easier way to get this.
And I think maybe on the city website, there's a spot, too, that talks about construction underway and stuff like that.
There's probably some people that don't do any of that.
What's that now?
There's probably some people that don't do any of that, radio, TV, newspaper, Facebook...
How do you hit everybody? But yeah.
I know I've tried on my part to direct people to the city website, and I've even done a little tutorials on how to get to where you want to go on it, so.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else? See none? Next item, please.
Item 5, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
So motion, is there a second?
A second.
Been moved in second to approve. Is there any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes. Next item.
Item 6A, consider resolution approving the Hutchinson Rod Run as a special event in designated entertainment district.
Paul Brown, city attorney, you have a resolution before you to approve the Hutchinson Rod Run as a special event. This is no different from last year, except for the dates on the resolution. That's the only change. Same district, same folks. And they're ready to go the first weekend in October, and we'd ask that you approve the resolution.
I know it's a very, very popular event for a lot of people. I know it brings folks downtown and things like that. So I, I would move to approve the resolution authorizing the Hutchinson Rod Run, October 5th, 2018, through October 7th, 2018, as a special event pursuant to City Code Section 18-901, and authorize the mayor to sign.
And I will second.
Been a motion and a second, before I ask for discussion. Is there anyone that wanted to talk to us about that? I know oftentimes we've had. No? Okay. Is there any further discussion on the council? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes. Next item.
Item 6B, consider resolution approving Brew Fest as a special event in designated entertainment district.
And much the same, the following weekend, it is Brew Fest. Change is just the date. It's in the same location, same event schedule for that time. We'd ask the council to approve it.
Were they not on the same weekend the last year?
No.
No? Okay. I'm confusing myself.
No, because those, those areas would...
They're in the same areas, aren't they? I mean, they overlap areas.
That cannot be.
Maybe for the benefit of the public, can you just briefly outline the boundaries? Or can somebody outline the boundaries?
Good morning. Actually, we tweaked it a little bit, because we anticipate more attendance this year. And so we extended the line near the playground, closer to the playground. We did not take in the playground, but we wanted to have, in the, on the map, it's the lower right portion of the map. So we wanted to have a little bit more green space to set up some tables for people to visit that is separate from actually being in the music area. And, I'm sorry, I didn't say, Jeannie Sharp, 1811 East 26th Avenue, on behalf of the Hutchinson News Today for Brew Fest. The, we're adding some new elements this year. And you'll see right down the middle, right down Walnut Street, where the blue boxes are. We're planning to have, the IBEW is going to be sponsoring a cornhole tournament. It's a 32-team, single-elimination cornhole tournament. And all of the proceeds that, that come in from that, they'll be organizing it. And they will be raising funds, and all that money will go toward the Reno County Veterans Memorial. So we, we have a great partnership going on with it this year, because beyond the IBEW being involved, the arts, the Arts Council Group, Arts Association, is going to be painting all of the custom cornhole boards. And then they will be having an auction to sell those boards, and all the money from that will go toward the Veterans Memorial also. So we're trying to make it really a great community event that adds to the community needs in an area that we know there's $150,000 gap with the Veterans Memorial funding to do their final stage to get the granite put up on the memorial. So that's one of the things that we're doing. So also, just for those of you that have been there before, and I'm happy to say, I think I've seen a lot of you there, it's a great event. We have Disability Supports of the Great Plains. We'll have 300 people there alone. And so we're, great weather permitting, we will have terrific attendance at it. We have Memorial Hall reserved as a backup for the rain, in the event of rain. If you recall, last year, the weather was a little dicey, right before it started. So we have the Memorial Hall as a backup for that. We have a great band. It's called the 90 Proof Project, that will be, it's a regional band that has roots in Wichita, as well as, has a Hutchinson participant, as well as a Newton person in the band. So a great classic rock and roll band, if you like that kind of music. And then when they take breaks, because it's October, we'll have a little polka as well, because people said they have to have some polka. Those are, you know, different ends of the spectrum. We, we will have 12 craft beers provided via city beverage, and then we'll, we'll have one homebrew. And if you've been there before, we had a VIP aspect to it before, and we're going to simplify it and take that part out of it. We'll have five food trucks that you see there along the fire department, parking lot area, former fire department. And anticipate a great, great time. So those are some of the high points. But we did, just for your clarification, we did visit with Hutch Rec and with the Rod Show folks, and talked about trying to combine our events. But you're right, besides the geography, that would be a challenge. I mean, they, they were generous in offering to move, but we felt like there might be some other inherent conflicts to, to do those together. So we're going to continue to talk about it down the road, but we didn't think we could make it work as one combined event this year. So perhaps in the future, we'll get to that. Any questions that you all may have? Here's a check and an insurance, Jamie.
I think I remember sort of last year, too, it was the same weekend as the tour to Salt.
Yes.
Do you know, is it going to be the same this year?
I'm sorry, I have, our appointment with Stratica, we haven't had yet. So I know that last year, we did attempt to have them work in tandem.
There was a coupon or something.
But we didn't, yeah, but we didn't, we didn't see any of the, maybe they didn't need any more carbs, I don't know. But they, we did not see many of the bicyclists come down. But that, that would be our hope. I mean, we want to continue to grow the events and...
Collaborate with others.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yes. So we, we felt like the addition of the IBEW is a great collaboration, and that's another enhancement. And we are working with one of the local brewers, that was a homebrewer last year, that's not a homebrewer anymore, that we're talking about doing a custom beer just for the event.
Oh, wow.
That will be something that we can name, and, or maybe have the public help us name, and that way we'll have a signature beer for, for the event that's created locally. So that's another new addition this year. Okay? And we appreciate your consideration and your approval, so we can get our liquor license. So, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll move to approve a resolution authorizing Brew Fest, October 13th, 2018, as a special event pursuant to City Code Section 18-901, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent. Item 6C, consider ordinance amending the comprehensive plan land use map for 17 West 13.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, Aaron Barlow, Associate Planner. What's before you is a request by Thomas Elliott of Elliott Mortuary to rezone a property located at 17 West 13th Avenue. And also a request to rezone the property, and we'll get to that. So there's the applicant. Property is located on 13, in the middle of the block, on 13th Avenue between Maine and Washington. It is, there's an aerial view, it is currently designated as a high-density residential, and it is zoned R4. Here's the property in question. It's a house, been vacant since February 2017. It's owned by the applicant. And the plan is still up in the air. You can ask specifics when, when Thomas gets up here, just like it's up here. But either a parking lot or a crematorium. The factors that need to be met for a comprehensive plan amendment are in front of you, and the staff and the planning commission, the planning commission recommended approval, and found that the factors were met. If you, that's it. Any questions?
So we'd be amending the comprehensive plan land use to, to what, on that parcel again?
Okay, I'm sorry. So the, the request is to rezone, or to amend the comprehensive plan map to commercial, so that it may be rezoned to C2. Property adjacent.
Yeah.
There's no gap, actually. It's just, yeah.
No, it's all adjacent.
It's a continued expansion. It's a continued expansion of what's already happened.
The property next to the subject property is also a multi, or a residential unit?
It is, yes.
There was, I made a note here, not necessarily detractor, but there was a citizen that came and had some discussion. What was the...
Susan O'Hara came and spoke, and she, while supportive, had questions specifically about the sewer line there, and about stormwater flooding, and those are issues that would be addressed through the site plan review, when Mr. Elliott presents whether he's going to put in a parking lot or some accessory building. The planning, the process would be reviewed by the engineering department, and we'd make sure that no issues, those issues would not arise. I can't speak to the property values specifically, what that would do.
Well, to me, it seems like if you have a vacant, you have an unoccupied property that's not being improved at all, it could probably only help versus hinder, but I understand her apprehension, but I, Mr. Elliott does an amazing job in this community and would only do a project with the utmost care, I believe.
Yeah, the use is already there. It probably would be much of a change to the neighborhood.
Aaron, do you know, are they going to tear the house down or move it?
I don't know. Have to ask the applicant that.
Okay.
Beyond the subject property...
You want me to step up?
Sure.
My name is Tom Elliott with Elliott Mortuary, 1219 North Maine. Our process, we've purchased the home, we've had the utilities disconnected. The home will be torn down for sure. Hopefully that'll take place next week.
Okay.
As we have in the past, purchase adjacent properties, for example, the property at 12th and Washington that used to be Evelyn Smith Photography, that was torn down. It is a vacant lot that is maintained by us. Whether we do do a building, build a building or parking, we will determine once we have the building down. I have talked to a contractor, but nothing has been determined. One step back, he mentioned a crematory. We, our crematory, we do have an operate, is on West 12th, right next to the alley, another property we purchased years ago from Hutchinson Investment Company. The possibility of a second crematory would be an option for that property, but none of that has been determined at this time.
Well, I think I saw something on the news about cremation becoming much more popular than traditional funeral.
So, the need for a second one is something we'll be looking at. If we would build a building, it would be a non-public building, it'd be a support building for everything else at the funeral home. If it was built, it would be built to have a crematory in it, if that be the case.
Okay.
Tommy, I think you've answered my question, but I was inquiring about the property to the west there.
The home next door?
To the west of your main parking lot there, at 12th and Maine, or 12th and Washington, excuse me. Just go, yeah, that property and then that property.
Is it residence there?
Okay.
I don't know why it's, if that's correct, why it's zoned commercial, I don't know. That is a private residence?
You do not own that, but you do own the property to the south.
I own the lot here.
Very good.
Which is Evelyn Smith, our crematory is here.
Evelyn.
Yeah.
And we have purchased when Frank Trefick closed the barber shop, we own that property too.
Okay. I see.
Only because it was adjacent.
Right.
And it became available, so. But, what's going to happen to the property, I don't know at this time, but it'll be an improvement versus what is there currently.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
You're most welcome.
Before you leave the podium, did you, did you see, is the residence a house worth saving, or could it have been? That's a judgment call.
I mean, the answer is yes. I mean, it could have been. The owners first came to me to buy it at a price I wasn't happy with. They then put it on the market. They, it did not sell. They considered having it as a rental property, and that did not work either, so we renegotiated a price. I made the purchase. I do not want to get into rental property, so our choice will be to tear the house down.
We were thinking more interfaith housing.
I was thinking of donation, maybe.
I had a few parties come in, doors, chandeliers, storm windows, things like that, but as far as any other group with insurance and everything, it's kind of something I didn't want to mess with.
Okay.
Well, I guess, maybe for others more so than yourself, but I'd certainly encourage when we have situations like this, and the house or the dwelling is...
Usable.
Usable, there you go, thank you. For people to consider, for business people such as you have to consider...
It does have some foundation issues.
A donation maybe where it could be moved.
Versus a board basement.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's an older structure.
Moving a structure is not always the greatest or easy thing, but I know...
It's not cheap.
Interfaith housing has been involved in that kind of thing, so just putting it out there.
Well, the offer stands, if anybody wants to move the house in the next week or so, it's theirs, I guess.
Yeah, just wanted to ask about that.
That's really a path I did not go, for a number of reasons.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to make both motions now, or would you like me to continue with the presentation and do both at the end?
Why don't we just deal with the changing of the comprehensive plan land use? So, is there any further discussion or a motion in that regard?
I would move to approve ordinance providing for adoption of an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map appearing at Section M-1-7-B of the 2017-2037 Comprehensive Plan for Hutchinson, Kansas, at 17 West 13th Avenue, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah, it is.
Been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Linda, call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Holdner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 6D, consider request to rezone property at 17 West 13th Avenue.
At that same meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of rezoning the property that all nine factors for a zoning amendment were met. And if you have any questions specifically about any of the factors, I'm happy to answer that.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, I'll offer a motion to approve ordinance amending the zoning map referenced to in Section 27-402 of Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hutchinson, as adopted by ordinance number 7518, and repealing certain parts of the original zoning map as designated in Section 27-402, 17 West 13th Avenue, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I should have asked of Aaron, since the idea of a possibility of a crematorium, does the zoning to...
C2.
C2, is that what it says specifically?
It's included.
Include?
It's included.
It is allowed as an accessory use.
Okay.
We will work with the applicant to make that happen.
If that's the route they pursue, okay.
Because there is an alley in there, but we'll make, we would make it work.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further discussion? Linda, call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Holdner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 6E, consider resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for construction of tea hangers.
Good morning, Council. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. I have two resolutions to be approved today. They are regarding the construction of eight tea hangers at the airport. In 2018, we had budgeted $370,000 to be bonded for the construction of these tea hangers. The resolution authorizes $380,000 to account for bonding costs. We did not include this in the bond that we did months ago, because this will be a taxable bond sale. It could not be included in the other bond sale. Because of that, and because of the amount, our bond council has recommended bonding this out, or bidding it out to local banks. The local banks have expressed interest in this, if we bond it over 10 years. The airport has anticipated a payoff of these bonds where the rent will pay for the construction over 20 years. And that's the way we had originally scheduled it, but the interest was for 10-year bonds. This does mean that we would have lower bonding costs, because we would be doing it through local banks, and we would pay a lower interest rate over 10 years, because 10-year interest rates are lower than 20 years. I wanted to make you aware of that. So, the first resolution is to authorize us to expend the costs for the construction, and to reimburse ourselves if we spend before we actually bond. The timeline for this is to accept the bids at our next meeting on the 21st, and then to accept the bond issuance in September. So, there may be some costs involved before we actually bond, and that's why we're doing the first resolution. So, I ask that you approve that one separately. And then, the second resolution that we will be doing authorizes finance and management to submit those bond bids to local banks. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
For my education, Angela, talk just briefly about taxable versus non-taxable. What's...
The reason these are taxable is due to the nature of the use of the tea hangers. We'll be running them out to private individuals or private companies, if not for our own use. So, the interest that the banks or other individuals who buy the bonds will be taxable, meaning they will have to pay income tax on that income they get from our interest. Whereas, the other bonds that we just issued, they do not have to pay income tax on that interest that they earn.
Gotcha. Does the 10-year versus 20-year impact our repayment capability? You mentioned that.
Right. I had originally budgeted these to be paid back over 20 years in our 19 budget, but by mistake. I looked at those numbers this morning. Our ending cash balance for our bond fund should be high enough that we can pay that extra in 19 and going forward.
Okay.
And still pay them off after 10, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes. We could do that.
My questions are really kind of related to Peter rather than you, Angela, I'm sorry, but regarding the project itself, if I can. Location of where the tea hangers would be built. The current plan right now to put the tea hangers is at the south end of the airfield. I don't, I wish I had a map or something. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar where the bulk fuel station is, at the very south end. With our new runway configuration and shortening runway four and everything that we finished up last year, that's opened up a spot big enough for actually two to three sets of tea hangers down there with their own kind of little corner. They've got their own access off Fourth Avenue with their own paved entrance already there. So, that's, that's the plan, if the FAA okay's it. They should okay it. They haven't yet, but they should, so. Give me a sense of what your market is at this point in terms of prospects for the tea hangers. Well, when I was, last year when we asked for this in the budget, I had 12 people on a waitlist that wanted new tea hangers at the airport. Since then, that number's moved around a little bit, but I'm not, I'm not lying when I say about every two or three weeks, I have people in my office, now that they've heard we're building tea hangers, my list is well over 16. So, there's, yeah, most of the surrounding airports know that Hutch is in the tea hanger market again, and so, there's about seven or eight new aircraft that want to come to the airfield. And there's also, I don't know, probably seven or eight on the airfield now that would like their own place instead of the community hangar. Are you trying to get letters of intent, or is it just a handshake? Right now, it's all pretty much... Handshake? Handshake, verbal, and they said, let us know when they're built, and we'll lease one. And as kind of a backup to that, too, even, you know, even if we don't get 16, I mean, we're only going to have eight tea hangers. I have no doubt that they're going to be full. So, you're comfortable with that? Oh, absolutely. Are you really? Yeah, there's, there's not an empty tea hanger in the state, so that's, everybody wants, everybody wants their own place.
How many can these accommodate? Did you say 16 at the max?
The tea hangers we're building this year, eight.
Eight, okay.
So, was it 1942 when the last tea hangers were built in Hutchinson? The tea hangers we have out there now, close, 1968. 68, okay. That's the last tea hanger.
You're only off by 20 years.
Wow. Oh, my gosh, that was wild.
68. 68, yeah. So, and the, one of the tenants out there now, I mean, even if, you know, I don't want to say that they're not going to bring the planes, we've got a tenant out there now that has agreed to lease four of them of the eight, if we can't get them filled, just because he wants to put his own aircraft and his own customers in there. I don't want to get into the weeds with you, but are these five-year, 10-year leases or what? Generally, the tea hanger leases, at least the ones we've got now, are year-to-year lease, and it automatically renews if they want to keep it. And that's, I haven't seen too many people that don't want to keep their tea hanger, so it's year-to-year. So, some revenue stream to the airport general fund from these leases? Probably, once the, once the bond's paid off. All right, okay.
20 years.
10 years from now.
10 years.
Well, the payback is 20 years.
Is 20 years.
The rental income, the income payback.
Right. What I've found, in talking with the other airports and the surveys that we've done and stuff, we need to keep it about $220 a month or below. More than that, and that's, that's, more than 220, and a lot of the aircraft owners, for the types of aircraft that we can fit in them, that's getting a little bit up there, kind of on the price, so. And so, that's kind of where the math came in at, too. So, $220 a month for 20 years will pay this.
But the value is having that airplane on our, at our airport, buying fuel here, services here, so there's, there's intangible.
Yeah, exactly. The FAA looks at our base aircraft list, they look at how busy we are, we sell fuel, the mechanics work on the aircraft, we get the operations. So, the more aircraft on the airport, the better shape the airport's in. Is that Frontage Road usable now to this site, or... Well, the, the access is actually going to be off the, at the corner of Fourth Avenue and Airport Road. Oh, it will. When we did the Fourth Avenue realignment project in 2014, 2015, they built an entrance down there with its own gates. Oh, they did. And everything. So, yeah, I mean, it's not going to be right at the intersection, it's a little bit farther east, but there's plenty of room, and it's not going to cause a traffic problem or anything there, so.
Good.
Okay, great.
All right.
Good. Super. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, Angela, I just, I wanted to get into this, some of the project specifics. Do you have more to add?
I do not have more.
Okay.
Mayor, I would move to approve resolution authorizing the City of Hutchinson to make certain public building improvements and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof, all pursuant to KSA 12-1736, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Holdner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 6F, consider resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds.
Angela, do you have more you want to add?
I do not have more to add.
Angela, do you have a sense of the interest rate that might be bid?
I do not.
Do not?
It's hard to compare it to the last one, because it is a different time span. Our last bond issuance was 20 years, this is 10. It's also taxable.
Taxable.
And taxable usually have a higher interest rate, so I do not have a feel for that yet.
Four, five, six?
She's not going to bet.
I know, I know.
I would not say higher than four.
All right, okay, that's all I got. Okay, thank you.
I will move to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of approximately $380,000 principal amount of GEO Bonds Series 2018-B taxable under federal law of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Holdner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 7A, consider 2017 financial audit report.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance, again. Our 2017 audit was conducted by Lindbergh, Vogel, Pierce, Ferris, and the lead auditor on that was Randy Hoffmeyer, and he is here to present the audit, which you have a copy of.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Randy.
I saw Angela passing the, your financial report out. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it yet in any detail. Also included is your communication letter to those charged with governance, and it's fairly easy to read, so I'll just let you read that at your leisure. In the audit report, which is found on page one and two, we've given you the city and modified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. In other words, a clean opinion... Uh, in other words, a clean opinion. Further back in, in the audit report, you'll, you'll see.
Randy, if this is appropriate for, for what you're wanting to present, I had a question, uh, on, on that, uh, on page two.
Okay.
Um, in the, um, paragraph labeled adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, I, I think I have the same question every year because I just can't keep it. But, uh, in part it says, the financial statement referred to above does not present fairly, et cetera.
Okay.
Say, say that in English to me.
Okay. The city has chosen to present their financial statements on the regulatory basis of accounting allowed by the state of Kansas, which is different than generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay.
So we first have to disclaim an opinion on GAAP and then we give you an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis.
And that's what that's referring to?
Correct.
Okay.
So we use Kansas cash basis, like a lot of.
I mean, I, I knew, I remembered that stuff, but I, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Sure.
Please proceed.
Okay.
And I think he does ask that every year and I'm glad he does because I, I also miss a beat, so.
Clear back on page sixty-two and sixty-three, there's a, another audit report which has to do with our, with the audit. Because the city expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal financial assistance, they're required to have what's called a single audit. So we test compliance, we review internal controls. And one of the thing, we did have one finding related to the single audit, which deals with cash management. There was one drawdown that the city made from FAA regarding the airport project that, uh, it took thirteen days to pay the, the vendor after you drew the money down, which really the federal government would prefer to work, you know, on a reimbursement basis, but they will allow you, you know, to draw it down and have a few days, three or, three to five days to spend that money.
I know there was reference to it, I assumed the, the issue being the, the interest lost to the federal government on that and money for an extended, extended, ten, ten or twelve days longer type of thing.
Thirteen days in this instance.
And that was due to changing accounting systems, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Not malfeasance?
Right. Any other questions?
Well, since we're talking about that finding and, and probably more a question to, to Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like we had a similar finding the year before. Maybe a different federal entity, but, but a similar kind of finding.
It was the same federal entity.
Okay.
And it happened at the end of a closeout of a grant. And as I recall, the city submitted a request for reimbursement like in August or October and didn't get reimbursed until near the end of the year, like December twenty-seventh. And it took a couple of months before they, that was caught.
Gives my question to you, Angela, is the, 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 the management response are similar, words are different.
Right.
Uh, but to my reading, say something like staff are instructed to make sure they do this before they do that type of thing. Since us, I understand circumstances were different, but it comes down to a staff error someplace along the line, um, compounded by some, you know, end-of-year reporting or in, in, in this year's case, uh, change of software, that kind of thing. So I guess my question is, will it be different next year?
Yes, it will. Um, our city clerk is now reviewing to make sure the check has actually gone out the door before even submitting the reimbursement. In the case this year, I believe we only made sure the invoice was entered into our accounting software and not that it was actually paid out. And it took a little bit longer for the invoice to get approved and get the check out the door than what we had anticipated because of the new software. So now our clerk is verifying that the check has actually been cut.
Versus just simply of an invoice entry or whatever? Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Uh, do we need to accept this?
Yep.
Yes.
Or approve it?
Yeah.
I will move to approve the twenty seventeen annual financial report of Lindbergh, Vogel, Pierce and Ferris Chartered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Yes. Randy, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item.
Item seven B, consider brush-up hedge policy amendment.
Good morning, Amy Allison, Senior Planner. Um, I will be, uh, requesting a policy or an amendment to the policy for brush-up hedge, but I did want to review the program with you guys really, really quickly. In two thousand eleven, the Community Improvement Commission at the time acknowledged that we had some situations where property owners had trouble paying for exterior paint on their home. Um, the, the program was then created to help, you know, economically stressed homeowners be able to paint their homes, specifically those that might have received a notice of violation to our IPMC code. Um, at the time, the maximum reimbursement amount was three hundred dollars. Um, and we have not changed that since two thousand eleven, even though we know the cost of, of paint and other items have increased. So, um, when we conducted our annual review of the program, um, staff recommended that we look at the maximum reimbursement amount for the program. Um, and, uh, and we suggested amending that to five hundred dollars. And that's based off the last two years of, um, program operations. Um, we've seen a steady increase in the total expenditure that property owners have been paying to paint their homes, um, including small, smaller homes. So, um, we wanted to kind of get ahead of that so we can continue to, um, help people pay for the cost of painting their homes, so we set it at five hundred dollars. Um, also allowing the Housing Commission to approve a seven hundred dollar reimbursement, um, if, if, you know, a large home or, or one that was, needed a lot of paint came through. Um, so, uh, the Housing Commission considered that July twenty-fifth and they also recommended approval of that amendment change. Um, that kind of concludes my presentation, but if you have any questions about the program, I see our PowerPoint's not up yet, but I did want to tell you that we recently celebrated our, our one hundredth paint, painted house using the program. Um, so we're super excited about that and we hope to continue with the program as it, as it is hopefully amended, so.
What do we have in the budget for brush-up hedge?
Sure, um, we budget about six thousand annually for the program. We spend about four to five thousand each year depending on how many applications we receive. So we anticipate, you know, the increase in maximum reimbursement can be accommodated with the current requests that we submit each year, so.
On, um, exhibit B, uh, the, the names in the houses, um, there's, uh, quite a few that have zero dollars. Why, why is that?
Um, it could, you mean this year so far?
This year, mostly.
Those are applications that have been approved, the house has yet to be painted.
Have not yet painted, makes sense, okay.
Is there, there's a time limit, isn't there, Amy, on how soon?
There's a three-month time limit, but we do allow extensions for, you know, other circumstances. I will tell you, most of those are being prepped for the United Day Work Day at the end of this month, so we're, we're waiting for that day to occur before we'll see the, um, receipts come in for those.
Okay, very good.
There were some other changes in administering the, the program that, that don't require our approval, but that were made. Could you review those quickly with us?
I have to remind myself really quickly. Um, I know one of them, um, as some of you are aware, we partner with Interfaith Housing, um, with Jeff Thompson and I, excuse me, I can't remember his new title. Um, but he provides the volunteer assistants to help paint these homes. One of the issues that, um, was commonly seen on these, um, volunteer houses was it wasn't either ready for painting when the group, you know, showed up that day to paint or, um, there were other issues with the siding, um, the window seals were rotted, other things. So we wanted, um, to not only be able to make sure that the house was ready to be painted if we had a volunteer group showing up, but also that, you know, it was in good enough condition to start painting that day. In addition, um, you know, staff, we can't walk on private property when we're going in and out and taking photos, so many times we only get the front of the house. Um, sometimes that's not enough to determine if the house is in need of paint, you know, it could be the exterior, that's the problem. Um, and not every neighborhood has alleys that we can drive down and get those photos. So we are requesting that the applicants submit photos of all sides of their house so we can see the true condition. Um, and then we also want to try and make this application online. We've had, seen really good success in our department with moving some of our other applications like the fence permits, sign permits to online applications. We'd like to see if this is something that we can also move online and maybe help people, you know, submit it and not have to come down to city offices, get the proper application and so forth. Um, in addition, we are moving into, um, a new neighborhood with the Hutchinson Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. And so we would like to, um, create door hangers with the applications on the back and do, when we do one of our walks, be able to hang it on houses that we see are in need of paint. So just some other, you know, minor administration changes that we would like to see happen. Very good.
Well, an excellent program and certainly, um, a pretty, pretty darn reasonable way to improve the looks of a neighborhood and, well, it's up there right now.
And I did.
Three-fourths, maybe a greater percentage of, of, of the, um, properties that have been painted are south of eleven.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, and I, I did blow up, uh, Southwest Brick Town, um, as I mentioned, helping, the Hutchinson Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, we've been very successful in implementing the brush-up hedge program as part of that. So as you can see, those are all the homes that have been painted during our time in the Southwest Brick Town neighborhood using, you know, all the agency support and trying to get people to apply and go through with painting their homes. So it was a success for us and we'd like to replicate that.
Has been. You ready?
Anything else for a motion?
I will move to approve, uh, excuse me, the recommendation of the Housing Commission to increase the maximum amount for paint reimbursement from three hundred to five hundred dollars for the brush-up hedge paint program.
Second.
Then a motion and a second for approval. Further discussions? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Item seven C, consider request for acceptance of the twenty eighteen Emergency Solutions Grant.
Hello again, all right. So back on May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, this body approved the two thousand eighteen Emergency Solutions Grant application to the state. Um, we were notified on July thirteenth that we were awarded that grant. Again, um, we were awarded on the, the grant on behalf of Bright House, Inc., who was formerly Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Center of Hutchinson. Um, I really don't have any other items to add, just that we are requesting that you approve the acceptance and then authorize the mayor to sign, but I do know Donna would like to speak with you for a few seconds, so.
You patiently sat this whole time, so.
Thank you.
So first of all, when we applied for the grant, and Amy's been a great help with that, we were the Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Center. Then June twenty-first, we rebranded, uh, with help from the Hutchinson Community Foundation and the United Way, um, and are now known as Bright House. The change in the name has seemed to just change how we communicate within the community. It's much more positive, it's less, less harsh. Um, in fact, I, I brought one of our new, uh, posters to put here in the city building bathroom if we can, and it says, domestic and sexual violence don't discriminate. The ESG grant is about forty thousand dollars and what it helps us do is run our safe shelter house. Right now, we have three families living in Hutchinson in our sh- safe shelter house, uh, fleeing violence. Last year, we had ninety-one people stay at our safe shelter house and almost half of those were kids because when moms come, they bring their kids. Um, that provided two thousand six hundred and nineteen nights of housing and four thousand two hundred and forty-eight meals. So the grant pays for living while someone is with us as well as keeping the house up. Uh, last year, this grant paid for some fascia and soffit improvements before it, it gets rotten. Um, uh, in addition to that, our crisis line is answered twenty-four hours a day by shelter house staff. They are trained to answer crisis calls and we picked up over seventeen hundred crisis calls from the shelter house last year. Just people wanting to know things, uh, from, you know, I, I need to get out, can someone help me safety plan? To a grandma who calls and says, I think my granddaughter's in a, in a violent relationship, what can I do? So we, whatever people need, that's what we provide and this grant helps with that. So thank you and, and thanks to Amy because this is a, a, a grant that's lots of dotting the i's, crossing the t's. So thanks to Amy for that.
Just, just one question, do you have any question in the future or going forward whether the Kansas Housing Resource Group will continue this grant program? Do you have any sense of that?
The ESG grant is a federally funded grant through HUD. Um, so as of right now, there has been no mention of doing away with the program, but you never really know. It's more year-year pieces, so.
So it's a pass-through KHRC?
Exactly.
Pass-through to?
Yeah.
KHRC, yeah, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Uh, anything further, counsel or a motion?
Let's see, I would move, get the right column here, motion to, uh, uh, accept the twenty eighteen Emergency Solutions Grant from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign the grant application and its documents.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzke?
Yes.
Deckent.
Yes.
Item seven D, consider SEIU contract for twenty nineteen.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel, I'm Merrill Dye, the Assistant City Manager. In front of you today is the, um, two thousand nineteen collective bargaining agreement with the Service Employees International Union. I just want to give a very brief overview of the changes, uh, for twenty nineteen. On Article seven, base wages, um, this will be the first year that the pay-for-performance system, uh, will be fully implemented in twenty nineteen following guidelines that will be a part of the new appendix called Merit-Based Pay and Bonus Plan Administrative Procedures. This provides for a two percent merit increase that is integrated into a merit matrix so that once the employee is evaluated and a rating score is assigned, then that matrix, uh, determines what the merit increase will be for that employee. Um, the tool, um, that is going to be used for the performance evaluation was actually, um, developed with the assistance of representatives from the SEIU. Um, this tool or this, um, um, administrative procedure also provides for an appeal if an employee does not agree with his supervisor's, uh, rating. Another change involves, uh, callback and call-in, uh, Article nine. Um, this is revised to require that employees who, um, have callback duties must be able to respond within thirty minutes of receiving the call. On Article fifteen, injury leave, this article is revised to add that an employee will not be eligible for injury leave pay when a personal health condition causes delay in the treatment or impedes the normal recovery of an occupational injury. Article twenty-nine, notice of merit increase is deleted because that's covered in the new procedures of Appendix C. This is for a one-year agreement from January, uh, to December of twenty nineteen. We also have a change in the Appendix C uniform, uh, wearing apparel and allowance. Um, we have designated employees who receive a uniform allowance mainly for boots and other apparel, but mainly boots. And, uh, they have, they are listed in the appendix, these jobs, uh, positions. Uh, but the frequency for receiving those, uh, that hundred and twenty-five dollar allowance, uh, for some employees was twenty-four months versus twelve months for the other employees. So now we have all of them receiving that, uh, boot allowance on a twelve-month basis. That concludes all of the changes for, um, the SEIU contract. Be happy to answer any. That concludes all of the changes for the SEIU contract. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just to, I guess, draw a bit of attention to it, the, on the base wages, you talked about the 2% merit increase pool, so to speak, that'd be available, but there's also going to be a matrix adjustment, am I correct?
An adjustment to the ranges, which is not negotiated, but the ranges for every job position will be adjusted by 2%. That's so that we can keep current with the competitive job market.
Yeah.
Well, when we were developing this, everybody said that the real measure was going to be the evaluation tool. That's going to make or break it, and I'm glad that they were able to input, and we reached consensus on the tool-
Right.
-to do so, because that's, that is so critical. So, good to hear that. I might also ask, the revision on the 30 minutes, what was it prior? Maybe you said, but I didn't catch it.
Well, we didn't have a limitation before, but that's become a concern when we really need employees to get in-
Get in.
...for urgent situations, whether that's at the water treatment or wastewater treatment plant or water and sewer. The other division is traffic, folks that carry, well, they, we call it pager duty, but it's really a callback, and they receive a pay for that.
Makes sense. Very good, well.
Anything else for a motion?
I was willing to. I always kind of laugh, if you're in agreement and they're in agreement, who am I to step in at this point and try and interject? I would move to approve the 2019 Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Hutchinson, Kansas and Service Employees International Union Local 513, AFL-CIO, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Cyrus DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Goldner?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes. Before you call the next one, do we want to take a break at this point or go through to executive session? I'm looking for some guidance from some of the rest of you.
I think we're almost done.
Let's just move on. John, you think we can move through the rest fairly quickly? Let's move on. The next item, please.
I got mine taken care of, but, yeah.
Item 7A, consider setting public hearing for 2019 budget.
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, for your approval today is the Notice of Hearing for the 2019 budget. And what this Notice of Hearing does is set the formal public hearing, which is set for August 21 at 5:30 PM. That'll be our formal required public hearing. And the Notice of Publication shows the, all the proposed expenses for all the funds, also the associated tax rate, or property tax rate for the general fund and the bond and interest fund. And, you know, this budget, these budget figures represent and really reflect the work of the city council staff for the past several months, and includes all the previous expense reductions we discussed and the previous study sessions we've had. We have copies of that information. And today, we can continue our discussion on the budget, address any questions that you might have. Once we agree on the final amount, the Notice of Hearing will set that as our maximum expenditure, and so we wouldn't be able to raise the budget above that. We could lower it, but we couldn't raise it at the August 21 hearing, so. So, really, just a quick summary, you know, proposed mill levy remains the same, so no increase in the property mill levy for 19. Council's aware of the number of cuts that we've made from the start of this budget submittal until today. We reduced headcount, reduced our operational expenses, capital projects, equipment requests, totaled to about $4.1 million from the first submittal. But, I think really, as the budget stands the date, addresses two of the council's directives during our May 8 council budget retreat, and one of those was a no increase in mill levy, property tax. And to address the fund balance issue, we talked about our new policy, and we've got our goals there, and our goal was to get to about the 1, 4.1, 4.2 range in 19, to eventually get us to that 5, just a little over $5 million based on two months of operating expenses. And so, we've made progress there. And I think we've made significant progress in addressing the structural issues that we've talked about where our approved expenses each year exceed our approved revenues. In 2019, we still have a gap of just about $250,000, but we compare that to last year's budget, or this year's budget that was approved, it was $785,000. And prior to that, it was even a little higher than that. And that gets back into that whole conversation about how we were able to do that, is because we were able to use our fund balance, our reserves, to fill that gap. And so, you know, that was a big part of the budget conversation with the council, is a big part of the need to make the cuts that we've made, and pretty significant. So, I feel pretty good about where we're at, the direction we're headed, and I guess we just stand for any questions the council has. Again, and we've got time between now and the 21st for additional conversations if it's needed, but I think we've had four, maybe five council study sessions on the budget. Of course, staff started working on the budget back in February, so. So, I would stand for any questions, kind of an update, maybe from the last study session, if you've got anything there. You've got your budget book, and I've got a couple of these for the media when, after the meeting, but basically, this is just the proposed, and really just a compilation of all the other information that I've sent out for the individual meetings. We met about property tax funds, we met about the utility funds, capital improvement funds, and so we've just kind of combined that here. And then, once the budget's approved, we'll put together a final budget that'll have the detail of each departmental breakdown, so. So, that's all I have really for today, other than if you guys, council has any questions about where we're at.
John, I just wanted to compliment you on the summary. I know, as we went through the various budget meetings, I was starting to have difficulty kind of following what we were doing-
Yeah.
...from one meeting to the next, and the cumulative effect of that. And the, what is it, about nine pages that you put together was helpful in pulling that together, so just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
A comment, and it struck me as I was reading through, and let me get my eyes back on that. Really, already thinking about our work next year for '20, the comment is made, let's see. Well, I thought I had a... Oh, there we go. Under the section, the paragraph, page 7, Municipal Equipment Replacement, during budget meetings, we discuss the danger of pushing equipment needs to our ears, knowing that these cuts are not sustainable. And just a comment, I fully recognize that. I think we'll need to be thinking about how do we address that, as well as recognizing barring something pretty darn significant occurring, that we are still in a similar position next year, needing to draw back, and yet, we can't continue to kick the can down the road, so. And I know we use that term as well.
Right.
I've got just a comment to make, if I can, just to add on to footnote to yours, Mayor. I know, going back in early June, there were some worst-case scenarios presented to us for our review, and I think it became very concerning to all of us in terms of the situation for Hutchinson and its excellent management of the city itself and its operations. But more directly, you know, I have taken some time the last 60 days or so in trying to identify other Kansas communities, and just to try and get a sense and a feel for, is this, these budget challenges, is this unique to Hutchinson, as opposed to other Kansas communities? And I think for the benefit of the general public, it certainly is not. There are many other Kansas communities, and that's as far as I researched, that are faced with the same, same challenges of declining ending balances, revenues are basically flat. And so, I think for some reassurances to the general public here in Hutchinson, that I think we are on solid financial footing. I think we will continue to be that way, but also in light that we must continue to be progressive in our thinking, that we cannot withdraw from needed projects and quality of life issues itself, that we're going to get through this, and I think, I think the budget that we're going to have the public hear on next week, I think will ultimately demonstrate that, so. Hopefully, some reassurance to the, to the population that we're on solid financial footing.
Well said, John. That's very good.
And the work is not done, and thank you for mentioning. Our eye was on the prize for next year as well.
Right.
And thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we did set a goal of getting to a point this year with the eye of getting to another goal next year, so. It will be work-
Right.
...as well next year, but thanks for bringing that up as well.
You bet. Now, hopefully, we'll see a little uptick in, you know, sales tax.
Didn't I hear, isn't sales tax actually up a little bit?
It's a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, not enough to move the needle a bunch, but it's a little bit up, and-
Some positives.
You know, it just, who knows what could happen there, but, yeah, you don't see a trend that it's going to, but, you know, in the past, we've just always had that three or four, 5% increment increase each year that helped-
Give a bum.
...really made things a little bit easier, but, so we'll keep, keep looking at that, so keep people buying local and getting things going, so.
Encourage our entrepreneurs.
I guess I'm going to tag on John's comments, maybe. I sure want to encourage the public. Give us a call or write us some emails or whatever. I see and hear so much of how bad things are, and do we have challenges? Yes. But it sure would help if, rather than simply saying it's bad and it's terrible and we're going to hell in a handbag, give a call so we can have some conversation, talk about things. And I know people support this or they support that, and it, you know, why are we spending money here and not spending money over there? Well, give a call and let's talk. Maybe we can answer the question, maybe there's some better ideas than have been, than have been talked about among us. It would be helpful. This year's pretty much done and in the bag for the year, but we've got another year and many other years beyond this one, and the conversations, I think, would be helpful. So, I'd encourage it and I'd welcome it, and I wanted to make that comment.
Okay, if we're done there, I will move to approve the Notice of Hearing, setting August 21, 2018, at 5:30 PM in the city council chambers, as the date, time, and place for the formal 2019 budget public hearing.
I will second, and I'll emphasize that that is a 5:30 PM meeting.
5:30 PM, yeah, not AM.
For those that are paying attention, that is our evening meeting.
Yeah.
So, please attend if that's of interest to you.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Cyrus DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Goldner?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item 8, report to city officials.
Nancy?
Nothing.
John?
I've got a topic. I was going through some of the proceedings from our council agenda, and I noticed there was quite a discussion in a recent Housing Commission meeting regarding the rental registration inspection program. And I guess I'm at a point, I'm not asking for anything, but perhaps there is some discussion within the Housing Commission and ultimately to the city council in terms of what the future of the rental registration and inspection program could or should or does look like with the changes in what the legislature-
Did to us.
...did to us to eliminate the inspection program and so on, so perhaps somebody here did. I don't want to catch anybody off guard, but what, in particular, what that dialogue with the Housing Commission is currently underway and what they may be recommending to us.
Yes, there was quite a discussion during the meeting, and we formed a subcommittee of Housing Commission members and staff, and we'll be meeting this Wednesday afternoon to kind of go over some talking points. There was kind of a yin and yang about not wanting to throw the towel in, but we want it to be a productive, positive program. We don't want to just collect money-
Right.
...and then I feel like it's being used wisely. So, I think this subcommittee group will come together and form some ideas, and then they'll report back to the Housing Commission. And it is on a tight timeline, because we want to get the decision made prior to October, because that's traditionally when we would start billing for the next year.
In October, I see.
So, we'll come to, the Housing Commission will come to a recommendation to bring to you or changes sometime within the next month and a half or so, I would guess.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
John, I'm glad you brought that up. I read that too, and I also attended the council or the Housing Commission meeting prior to this last one where they discussed it as well. I think we need to think long and hard. I'm really looking forward to the recommendation. I was one of the biggest proponents of that-
Yep.
...program, and I see that it is not, I don't think, made the impact that we intended, but caused a lot of bad feelings amongst landlords. And just an example of how we do things with the best intent for our community, but we need to be open-minded and objective about the result of those decisions, and go back and change them if they are not working in the manner that we intended. So, really appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, hopefully, our heels aren't dug in the ground that we're not flexible and open enough to adapting to these changes, because I think it's certainly in order, and it's in fairness to those landlords.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm only sorry that I wish we'd have maybe a year ago pushed for reevaluating it, given, given the curveball we were thrown-
Yeah.
...that I think had an extremely significant negative impact.
Definitely took the teeth out of it, I think.
Yeah.
We did do a little-
We did.
We tweaked it a little bit. We talked about it, and, you know, now we're at a point where the program actually sunsets at the end of 19. I mean, that was the formal, we set that number for a five-year period.
That's good as far as evaluations are concerned.
Yeah, so, you know, but I think the recommendations now are going to look at, because there's a little bit, I mean, there's people in the Housing Commission that probably think it needs to go away, and others that want to keep, you know, keep working at it. And so, I think the subcommittee will come back with two or three alternatives to consider, and then it'll be before the council, yeah, within a couple months, probably, yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Part of the discussion, to add to Jim's comments at that meeting, was to, if we're going to modify it, have a year to hopefully get some experience with modifications that would give us some data as to whether or not to continue at all at the end of 19 or whatever, so.
As it stands now, it's almost like it's operating as maybe just something that could happen under IPMC, but with a fee charged to landlords. So, I mean, if we were just enforcing the International Property Maintenance Code on those rentals, they would be subject to the same standards, but without the fee. Does that make sense? So, it just seems unfair to landlords.
Yeah. Well, I'm hopeful we'll have some good recommendations-
Yeah, me too.
-coming out of the Housing Commission. So, anything else, John? David?
I wrote down a couple, and Jesse stole my thunder a little bit, but Southwest Bricktown, I did pedal by this morning. They were putting the roof on the shelter building, and the playground does look nice, and I think it's going to be another great asset. It was always a park mostly in name only, it was just a green space, and there's fun to be had in green space.
It was an empty field.
Now, there's some activity that can be done there as well. One person broached the subject to me the other day, though, about traffic signals, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, or I'll take a answer later. But with regards to some of the protected turn lanes, and whether or not in other circumstances, sometimes there'll be a green protected turn lane, and then it will go to, or, excuse me, a green arrow protected, then it will go to green, allowing you to turn if it's open. Well, certain intersections, like 30th and Main, when that arrow is done, you're stopped at that turn. Could we not get more traffic flowing and all that stuff if it was more like the one at 17th and Lorraine, where it's protected for X amount of time, then it goes to green, allowing both lanes to go? Because you probably sat at those intersections on occasion where you're, there's nobody coming, but you're in the turn lane waiting for that arrow to come up versus a green and turn at your caution or whatever. I don't know if we have the capabilities to reprogram some of these lights, or if that requires-
Oh, yeah.
...new lighting to do any of that. But anyways, I'll pose that and I'll-
Yeah, I don't really have a response for you.
Wait and answer if we can, yeah.
I remember having a similar question come up a few years back, and it being explained to me that we're on several different systems-
We are.
...with our traffic lights.
We are, yeah.
And so, some of them are kind of more progressive, newer technology, and some are not, and some are, you still have, they're triggered by you driving over them, whereas some others are.
I guess, yeah, I made the assumption that everything was up to the- I guess, yeah, I made the assumption that everything was up to the same.
Yeah.
Interesting, that you don't assume, right?
So that may be the reason behind that.
That's all I had, thank you.
Jade?
I wanted to encourage everybody who hasn't advanced, voted to please get out for the gubernatorial primary today, seven to seven. And you're, at your polling place, that is today, please go vote, expecting only twenty-two percent of Reno County voters to get out today. So let's please prove them wrong. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was the ordinance establishing a building commission was wondering if that would be on the next meeting.
I'm going to visit with you personally after this meeting.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, that's all I had.
I did a little vote. And just a little more on the National Night Out, it is Southwest Bricktown, but also Farmington and College Grove, which Jesse did mention. But each of those three neighborhoods are having a, a National Night Out celebration this evening.
Cross point, too.
I'm, I'm sure even if you're not a resident of that area, they'd be glad to, to have our attendance.
John?
A couple of things. First, we'll start, I've got a report in the packet on the parade parking question that was brought up a couple of council meetings ago. We, we spent some time at the staff level talking about that with Public Works, downtown folks, law enforcement. And, you know, I won't go through all that, but basically, I think it's, as we've looked at it due to the, I guess, at this point, we had one, I guess, I think we had one complaint about that. And then one that wanted to leave it alone. But, but, but our recommendation is just to continue parade operations as they are today. There's, you know, a lot of logistic issues involved with blocking parking off that I think we really got to think about. We're talking about several blocks of, of parking that would have to be barricaded, probably middle of the night, because we've got people live there, we've got businesses. Saturday parades, we've got businesses open and, you know, I just think we really, there, there's some tactical issues there that we really have. Logistics issues that we'd have to talk about. But, but I'd just throw it open to, to what you guys think. I think Jade had a poll out there around the country about our parade policy, so.
I was going to report on that, I was hoping you'd bring this up. So, yeah, I, I actually received a couple complaints about the parking, but when I posed it to people on Facebook, had two hundred and twelve votes, one hundred and thirty-four to seventy-eight in the favor of letting, letting it stay as it is, so almost two to one. People were very passionate about their opportunity to stake their claim and, and park their cars.
Why didn't we have to do all the staff report? We could have just had you to vote and be done with it.
Take it to the people. But we did have a lot of good suggestions that came up for compromises that we might want to explore in the future, such as using only one side for parking. Or maybe part of one side would have parking banned. And if you have small children and you're concerned that they can't see because of their cars blocking a view, then maybe then they could, you know, stake their claim there or using parking lots of businesses, such as the old Dollar Store, that is no longer. So there's a lot of good suggestions that came up out of it that we might want to explore in the future. But bottom line, people seem pretty passionate about keeping it the way it is, the majority.
And there's, there's about three or four places along the parade route that are unobstructed now. And Jim was sharing the Avenue A, Ninth and Main, D C I Park, so, so there are some unobstructed areas along that route that people, but, yeah. Well, anyway, I appreciate hearing.
Yeah.
John, a co, a comment. I've driven for a number of years of a tow vehicle for, for one reason or another. And I wasn't aware until this year, apparently the party I drove for shared emails with me. That throwing of treats or whatnot from the, from the, from the vehicle or the trailer or whatever was not allowed. And, and folks associated were supposed to walk up to, to kids or, or adults with their flyers or whatnot. So I was more in tune this year to still, how many people were still throwing things from the vehicles. And as a driver, that is what tends to.
Create problems.
Create the problem. So what I would urge is, is if, as a, as whoever the fair, excuse me, parade organizers are, and I don't know if we have any responsibility, city or law enforcement wise, but to really make it a point to enforce that. Because if the, if the fair particip, uh, parade participants are walking up to the crowd and handing out their candies or their pamphlets or whatever, it, it'll decrease that, what I remember being the concern of people getting closer and closer to the vehicle. So if we've got that as an expectation, I'd suggest we, we be stringent in, in enforcing it. And I think that would eliminate at least that safety concern that was raised initially.
That and getting those shriners to quit doing those figure eights. Horrific tragedy, I just don't want to be there to witness it. No, they do a good job of whipping around.
Yeah, wow.
They got caught by a train this last parade and they just kept going in circles and circles. I thought, man, they're going to get dizzy.
Anything else, Council? Sounds like we are following the staff recommendation and studying course.
And, I mean, it, we can, we can tweak things, but, you know, sometimes things work out pretty well the way they've been going. And, and I think people, man, the crowds, I, I, you know, we have tons of people down here for the Christmas parade and more for the.
July Fourth was big.
July Fourth was a big parade.
It was big.
So.
Yeah, and if we had a narrow Main Street, that would be a totally different situation. But as wide as this Main Street is.
That's exactly right.
It should be workable.
Yeah. Okay, um, let's see here, I think I had that. And then I've been in communication, and this is really an agenda item, but I guess I need a little direction because there's probably something needs to happen sooner than later. But the Kansas State Fair has approached me about a sidewalk that runs along the north side of, or the south side of the fairgrounds from the fire station. What is that, what street?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, yeah.
That would go all the way up to gate one. The cost of that was pretty expensive. It was like twenty, about thirty-six thousand dollars. And then we talked about the sidewalk from, from the fire station to gate two, which is a cost of about seventy-four hundred dollars. And I told Bob Mater that, you know, originally that, you know, would the fair consider, you know, a half and half on that? And I've got no response on that. We, we really don't have a place to go get thirty-some thousand dollars. It, it is a sidewalk that's needed. I mean, there's no doubt about it. We've got the one in front now that we did with the Main Street project. There really is a lot of traffic on. And so I guess the question is, is the council interested in a cooperative purchase of a sidewalk to gate two, so.
Cooperative.
Cooperative.
Cooperative, yes.
But, but not all, yeah.
Well, it's technically state property, so, yeah, I think cooperatives in order.
So I, you know, I just, I, you know, the, the question just came out, we pay, well, you know, I guess we did the, you know, when Main Street, we did that as part of the Main Street project. But I think the sidewalk along there is probably needed at some point in time, probably a good thing. But, you know, if, if we can work together on something like that, and we've got a place, we could come up with half of that first phase seven of the three, it'd be thirty, a little over three thousand dollars if there's some support for that.
Is that property, city owned property?
That, well, the right of way would be, yeah.
The right of way.
Oh, the right of way.
But it's, it's state fair, yeah, so.
Anticipating having this done before.
I think there's some urgency about that, but, and, you know, we've got a contractor on site that you, we had some really good quotes from them based, based the fact that they're on site near Main Street. And it's, it's likely that that could happen if we made that decision sooner or later. Personally, I don't see a real urgency, but if, if there is there, I'll have that conversation. And if there's no cost share, then we'll just have to put that in competition with other projects going forward, so.
In the spirit of cooperation, was the county approached about participating in, in that venture? Not so much?
I'm sure there's a statute that would, that they wouldn't be able to do that, so. If there isn't one, they'll find one.
Worth asking, okay.
That's hilarious, John. It's so accurate.
That's so true.
The other thing, I've got a note here from Fire Chief Bears here, and he, did, did we tell the council about this last time or not? I don't remember. About the, the grant we got for the assistance to the firefighters grant for eighty thousand dollars from FEMA?
I read about that.
Yeah, I read about that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you guys read about it, anyway, so that's.
Well, hey, congratulations.
Yeah, very good, yeah. And I think that is all I have.
What are you thinking on executive session?
Uh, what time is it? Probably eleven thirty.
Eleven twenty, yeah.
So ambitious.
You serious?
I know we always seem to.
Well, we can.
We can always extend, huh? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, move to recess into executive session pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exception K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B three in order to discuss issues related to the twenty nineteen contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units. The open meeting to resume in the city council chamber at eleven thirty A M.
I think she did that in one breath, but I'll second it.
I'm a yogi.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hiros de Carvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzki?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.